The roll call.
Trustee Ahuna.
Ayo.
Trustee Akaka.
Ayo.
Trustee Akina.
Aloha, my kakou.
Trustee Alapa. Trustee Galuteria.
Ayo.
Trustee Suzo.
Ayo.
Trustee Trask.
Present.
Trustee Wahehe. Chair Hulu Lindsay.
Present.
We have eight trustees present.
Thank you. Aloha Kakou, welcome to our Board of Trustees meeting. This meeting can be viewed and observed via livestream on OHA's website at www.OHA.org/livestream. Joining us today, we have our CEO Kapohana Stacy Ferrera. I would like to ask Stacy to introduce any administrative staff joining us today.
Aloha Kakahiaka, Chair and Trustees. Joining us today from the administration is Chief Financial Officer Ramona Hink, Interim Corporation Counsel Everett Ota, Interim Senior Legal Counsel Nichi Ozawa, Senior Director of Hawaiian Cultural Affairs Hailema Fardin, Chief Advocate Kiopu Rilitz, Compliance Enforcement Manager Kai Markell, Director of Land Assets Tim Wong, IT Systems Engineer and Administrator Daniel Santos, and Arlene Agnaldo. Mahalo.
Thank you. Before we go on to approval of the minutes, I'd like to announce that I'll be taking the agenda out of order and allowing Huihana Pa'akai or Hanapepe to go ahead of Hui Malama or Kane Olouuma. So at this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve for the approval of minutes. You'll notice that these are. Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. You will notice that these are all site visits. So are there any discussion? If not, roll call vote.
Oh, sorry.
Ayo.
Mahalo. Trustee Akaka.
Aye.
Trustee Akina.
Aye.
Trustee Alapa.
Aye.
Trustee Galuteria.
Aye.
Trustee Suzo. Trustee Trask.
Aye.
Trustee Wahehe. Chair Hulu Lindsay.
Aye.
We have eight yes votes.
Thank you. At this time, we'll move on to Huihana Pa'akai or Hanapepe. Uh, Dana Hunu, trustee.
Uh, mahalo Chair and mahalo, um, trustees. And for everyone being here today, um, today I just wanted to give a li- uh, a brief updates of what has been uh, going on on the island of Kauai, especially with our cu- uh, some so- some cultural sites that are there. So the first one was, uh, the Pa'akai, it's on the, uh, uh, it's up, the Huihana Pa'akai or Hanapepe, it's, um, with the last year, uh, the last couple of weeks, we've been having a lot of rain. And, um, I just, if we can put up some of those pictures, um, so every year, they, they, you know, it, it raises con- uh, concern, because this is the salt that we're talking about. And, um, I'm showing these two pictures, because if you ever visited there, there's these black barriers that used to stand as wind barriers. That's how high the water level is. It's way, it's way high. So there are a lot of concerns about, you know, what it could, the, the damage it could, and the harm it could do to the salt beds. So they're asking, you know, for support or help, and, and, and every year, it, it, you know, these kind of things happen. So I, I just wanted to just, um, say that, um, first of all, OHA staff has been on it. I know Kai them. That they, they, they've been talking with the families of the salt ponds. And they understand that, you know, every single year, we, we, we have the same problems, the same issues, and the, you know, it's various things, like fighting to stop the building of roads and now eventually they have roads all the way around where it's just, it's a big pond, a pool now, and the waters can't, uh, drain out, so. You know, they're looking for support, however we can support, um, I just wanted to just make sure that our trustees understand that we've been in support for like over twenty years, and, um, I know Kai knows a lot about it. If Kai would like to say more about it too. So, um, you okay? Yeah, so, um, I, I, I just brought this to our attention, because I know they're gonna be looking for support in the future, because this water cannot stay inside of the, the salt pond, and, um, you know, again, they've been coming back for various reason, uh, uh, things like, for example, they had homeless living above it. They didn't want none of the waste going to the salt beds, and so they asked OHA for help. They asked OHA for help with stopping building the road for the development of the airport, uh, you know, along that side. Um, asking if we can, uh, help drain some of the water out, you know? So I just wanted to, to just keep you guys up, up, up to speed, um. I, I, I've been talking to Kule Santos, and the other per- person is, uh, Olivera, Malia Olivera. Uh, but I've been talking to Kule, but just in the recent days, she's been in a bad accident, so. So she couldn't make it today, but, you know, I just hoping that she gets better. If she's out there listening, but I just want them to know that, um, and you guys know that, well, I wanna make sure that we continue to support. Cause, um, a lot of the, um, response they get back from like the county, or I don't know if the county or the state is, like, you guys cannot drain the water out, because you guys can get sued and all that kind of stuff, so I just wanted to make sure that we understand that, as OHA, we need to, uh, at least understand and support in that, in any way we can. So that is, uh, the salt pond. Anybody else got any questions? We're gonna be visiting the salt pond too, is one of them.
I do.
Yeah.
Um, go ahead.
Yeah, so, um, who, who are the stewards of these lands? What does this, what? What land does this fall under? Is this county or state?
Uh, uh.
Hi.
Kai, you like, you like answer these, so, so I like make sure that people. Yeah, no, she's staying in hospital, actually, in Queens.
Um, good morning, aloha trustees, and, um, thank you for the question, uh, trustee Akaka. Um, so it's like most coastal areas, it's mixed jurisdiction. Um, you have state lands up to high watermark, you have county, um, park, you have DOT with an airport there, which has caused a lot of problems, so. Um, as trustee Ahuna mentioned, when I first started here, two thousand and four, we were already, um, working with Kule over, uh, Mayor Baptiste, Adolescent Drug Rehab Facility, which is important, uh, we all care about it, but they wanted it right there at the salt beds of P'ol'um. Um, constant since then, I just think it's been like yearly battles of, um, the most recent one was, of course, the, the helicopter operation. You know, and they leach oil and fuel in the, in the vicinity of what is supposed to be some of the purest Pa'akai in our Lahu'i. Um, the county has gone in and pushed the roads around, um, pushed asphalt, buried asphalt. Um, it's like it continues to be a struggle for what we all recognize as a, as a national treasure, unlike any other place in the Pacific. Um, now we have on top of that, uh, we did ask for a hydrological study, because we know sea level rises, it's here already. Um, but that's the big challenge now is nature is, um, making the waters rise. So it's not just a matter of the waters inundating and coming over the salt beds, but the wells, the unique wells that come up underneath that they get the, 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 uh, the Kai from, those are being inundated as well. And then the more water gets inundated, the more pollution from the surrounding, you know, restroom, I mean, it's just like, the whole place should just be a, a, a pool at this point. You know, and however the lands can get acquired or out of the county and just say, you know what? Everybody loves their park, but you know, this is something that's under threat, and it's unlike any other resource we have in the islands. Um, so we have the hydrological study, um, now, been talking with, um, Kule and Malia and the, and the different, um, Hui, uh, Pa'akai families. And now trying to figure out what, how to, how to deal with the drainage. Um, hydrological study did say that, um, the only thing that might save it is to move them Ma'aka away from the, the ocean. But that, the beds possibly could be moved Ma'aka. Um, the underground water tunnels that feed the water is a little probably difficult. Um, and then the, the special clay beds there, that is kind of the oily clay that they line the beds with to, to make it evaporation. Those, that's a resource that's right there. So I don't know if that, um, you know, about how that could happen, but it's clear like after, I mean, twenty years, actually thirty years. When I was at Burials, when Ethan Apoka, my boss, was working with the Hui families at that time over issues, so. Like after thirty years, we have to say, when's enough's enough? When do we say, you know what, lava, let's do everything we can to fix this now. Otherwise, you're gonna have the same thing happening, happening, happening. And, um, luckily, we met with the Army Corps of Engineers over something totally different. Um, there was a hollow eye flooding, and they have a program where they can help come in with, um, flood control, with drainage issues, um, on cultural sites, fish ponds, coastal areas, so. I'm excited about that. We're gonna try, reach out to Jesse Bahana, who works with them. And see, can they do an assessment of Hanapepe and see how could we divert the floods, drain it, whatever we could do, what could the Army Corps help with? So I'm, I'm a little hopeful about that, but this is like, it's, uh, perennial problem. You know, and it needs to be, the families are so patient, but hard when everybody, all the county, the state, everybody's just like, uses your cultural treasure as a dumping ground, you know, or for the public or whatever, and the houses, they, you know, they, they gravitate towards there, it's just a very difficult, which is mostly our people. You know, so anyway, that's kind of the summary.
Kai, I have a question, um, uh, trustee Akaka asked, who stewards that salt ponds?
So again, it's a mixture of, I think the county has a park there, the state has the high watermark, and then DOT, I believe, has the airport, the, the runway and asphalt over there, so it's mixed jurisdiction. But the families are the ones that have made the Hui.
Yeah.
And they control kind of the, the salt making activities and the, whatever they can, but it's, it's like public access. I mean, people will come, tourists will come, and they'll tramp around in the salt beds, taking pictures and not realizing what they're doing. You know, so it's, it's a pervasive problem, you know, but maybe we can gather all the landowners together and say, you know what, enough's enough, we'll pop, let's do something substantive and fix this.
Yeah.
While we're all here.
Right, and maybe, um, you, maybe you folks can talk to Corps of Engineer to see if a barrier can be set up around the salt ponds to protect it.
Potentially, I'm sure you have a lot of experience with, um, with dealing now with the hollow eye, right, the, the flooding that could happen there, so. Uh, but we're excited, because we, we just made that connection.
Oh, good.
Um, yeah, so, but I'll let everybody know.
So, um, historically, from OHA's end, um, to whom have we sent letters to officially in terms of the protections? What we, awesome that we did that.
Yeah, Chair, so we've written letters to the county over their rehabilitation drug center. Um, the mayor, we've, we've written, um, letters to the state, um, DLR, we've written letters to the county of Kauai, um, just over the last thirty years, uh, uh, all the different landowners, um, so.
I think we need to send another one, another set with photo images and so forth, like what, um, was just shown to us, so they have the visual, what we're seeing. They haven't heard of seeing it themselves.
Definitely, um, o- one thing that, I don't know if, um, trustee Ahuna remembers, but um, we had a committee meeting, and I come over and, you know, Kule was there, this is some years ago, and, and, and she was frustrated, and you know, she remarked that OHA's writes some really great letters, but where's the follow-up afterwards, you know? I felt kamahu, because I knew, I knew someone that was true. You know, we can, we can threaten all kind of stuff, but if there's no action to back it up, they, they, they take our letters and put them in the trash. So we can write another letter and sum up all the issues, the pervasive issues, and tag everybody in, um, and basically at some point, we need to say, you know what, we're exhausting all our administrative remedies here, and if you're not willing to do something affirmative to help us protect the constitutional rights of our Lahu'i, then maybe we see you in court. Because otherwise, they don't listen to, to much of anything. You know, the, the mayors keep changing, council members keep changing, DLR people keep changing, and that's what I've seen. So, but I, I love that idea, because it would help summarize everything for the, for the board as well and administration, so.
Given that we're gonna visit, um, this place again, maybe we can ask the various bodies from the county to the state and DLR to join us on this, so we collectively are there.
Definitely, we could ask for Hui to form as a last resort, um, and see what everybody can come up with, and, and add the Army Corps of Engineers into, for the first time. Yeah, for the first time, they would be part of it, so, but thank you for that suggestion.
Thank you, Kai. Go ahead.
Um, thank you, Kai. Um, there's a, appears to be several moving parts here. And I think for us to take any action on the board level, we're gonna require a comprehensive type of approach. You got thirty years of, uh, history on this. Uh, um, are we to, um, understand Kai that you are the point man for OHA? For this particular situation?
Um, well, Kamakana and I in compliance have dealt with this issue, and this goes back to the former iteration of Native Rights Land and Culture, before that, that was back in the two thousands. We dealt with it then, but, um, policy, certainly there's policy issues.
Yeah.
Um.
There's geographical issues that happen annually, it appears with the rains and.
Increasingly so, yes.
Yes. So a, a, a bit of a more comprehensive approach, I think, from OHA's perspective, because we can be writing testimony all of, for the next twenty years. But there's gotta be something that's gonna be done, like the Chair was recommending talking to the Army Corps of Engineers, what could be done from that perspective. Is, is there a, uh, a process going on with dialogue for those who can remedy this thing?
Um, yes, there isn't, because this issue has surfaced again. Uh, my head's already has a plan to move forward on everything, so.
Okay, okay. I'm just trying to wrap my, my head around the, the solution.
Me too.
Okay, okay, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Kai.
Thank you.
Trustee Ahuna.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to, it's the last thing I wanted to say, but that's a great point, uh, trustee Galutaria, um. It, you know, how can we, how can we really move forward and, and offer up a good solution, um? You know, a lot of it has to do with the drainage. It's just going in there and getting stuck there, and, I mean, I don't know what else to say. But I brought it to the attention, so it's, it's gonna come up, that's why.
Um.
And, um, just wanted to make sure that we, we have a, some kind of understanding, but thank you all for that. That was the first one. The second one is, uh.
Just a moment, moving on. Um, Lihua, did anyone sign up to speak on this subject?
No one signed up to speak on this item, and there's no one signed up to speak on the next item.
Thank you, um, Stacy, do you have anything more to add on this item?
No, Chair.
Okay, thank you again, Kai, thank you, uh, trustee Ahuna. So we'll move on to Kan- uh, Kanele Oumuah, O- Ouma, um, with Rupert Rowe from Kauai. Uh, Rupert, you wanna come and sit at our table in case? And then we have Sherry Broder, who did, uh, some ana- analysis, and she's on virtual. Sherry wanted to be here, but a little bit under the weather, so she decided to do virtual. Trustee Ahuna.
Um, thank you, Chair, thank you trustees, um, today I just wanted to give you more of an update to from our last meeting, um, we all agreed that we'd be in support of looking at some, a le- some legal action in, with the, with the, um, drainage problem that they were having with Kane Olouuma, where the water was draining into the. Okay, now, a couple steps back. Um, we were absolutely, we were late in, when we had to put our, to put a time in to have a legal, uh, battle, so, um, we missed that deadline, and there's another group already ha- uh, in le- in, uh, having a legal action with the county right now on the drainage system, so. What does that put us, and what are we gonna do moving forward? And this is why we, we, um, brought Sherry on, Sherry and Rupert has been talking for the past couple of weeks, and, um, so if we're not gonna have a legal issue, what is the next steps? How do we move? Um, and that's what today's all about. What are the next steps? So right now, you know, I, I, I don't know how to respond to, um, what we agreed on with supporting Kane Olouuma with legal actions. But I just wanted Sherry just to talk a little bit about, um, the situation going on and why we have to take a different stance. Sherry?
Yeah, aloha, everybody, please excuse my voice, I've got a slight case of laryngitis, so, um, makes it a little difficult for the lawyer to keep talking, but, uh, I just want to, uh, say mahalo for bringing me in on this interesting and important matter, and I think I was very interested for me to hear Kai's report on the salt ponds, because I think that that is really important, uh, the issue in Kane Eolouma is similar, which is that the, this, that what's happened in Hawaii, like if you go to the climate change portal for the state of Hawaii, they say that the weather has changed in Hawaii, and we have more drought. But when we do get rains, it rains harder. And so I think both locations, they're not that far apart actually, are experiencing much more flooding than they used to. Uh, so when I started to look into this, I saw that, uh, the law firms of Lance Collins and Bianca Isaki had sued over the County of Kauai Planning Commission meeting on December twelfth, twenty twenty-three, and there's only thirty days to file, so that's why I guess trustee Ahuna's pointing out that to appeal their decision, um, Bianca and Isaki and Lance Collins have already taken that forward, um, they they have already appealed to the Fifth Circuit Court uh, on the decision, and they've been very busy. They filed other lawsuits over additional approvals uh, for developments in that area. Um, I did do a case for OHA in two thousand and six before the Land Use Commission, and, um, I thought we won that case, but when I went recently to for a site visit, I could see all the developments that went up Ma'aka, I was pretty overwhelmed by how much development has in fact taken place, and there's more development planned. I had talked to Kai, we had kind of explored the idea of uh, finding out like what can be done, what should be done to divert the water. And I think his pursuing with the Cor- Army Corps of Engineers is potentially uh, something that could be of great use, uh, not only to the salt ponds, but perhaps to the, uh, Kane Eolouma Heau complex as well, and I know, when I've talked to Rupert, he's mentioned that he did talk to the Army Corps of Engineers before. Uh, so the ownership is similar to the salt ponds, which is that the county owns most of the land, but the state owns some as well. Uh, in this case, uh, the nonprofit, uh, which Rupert is head of, has a adopt a park agreement with the county, so they have specific stewardship responsibilities and rights. And at the same time, you know, the area is owned and fee simple for the most part by the county, and to some extent by the state. Uh, I had, uh, I think that, uh, you know, I have worked with both Lance Collins and Bianca Isaki before, and they're really terrific lawyers, and they have been, I mean, they filed more than one lawsuit over these develop, this current development that's being planned, and they've duh, I read their opening brief, which I sent to all of you, and they did a tr- really great job. Uh, I'm not saying that at the end of the day, uh, OHA should not file any lawsuit, but I, I'm still looking at various options. I think that, uh, uh, that finding out the truth of the matter, which would be using the hydrological studies and figure out what actually really needs to be done, and maybe Rupert has something to say about that, because he's talked to the Army Corps of Engineers before. I think that would be, uh, really important. Uh, as Kai was pointing out, th- these matters in this area of Kauai have been going on for quite some time. And, uh, I think it still needs further study and, uh, work before the best decisions can be made to move forward. Does anybody have any questions?
Yes, Sherry. Um, I know we talked about, you know, next steps and the Bishop Museum, can you share about why we, uh, maybe OHA should be in contact with, um, DJ Mailer at the Bishop Museum regarding, uh, Kane Olouuma? Thank you.
Okay, well, I, I read in the materials that, uh, Rupert's group put together in twenty ten, when they presented their case to the County of Kauai to uh, get the adopt a park agreement, and in there, they pointed out that they had applied to be on the National Historic Register, but that, and that all the, uh, archaeology reports, you know, indicated that you know, supported that kind of a, uh, finding by the federal government, but for some reason, there was one archaeologist who had a different point of view. And so the Bishop Museum uh, withdrew their support, and I, I think that's wrong. I think they're wrong. I mean, I, I went on a wonderful site visit with you folks, and I, I just don't see how they could possibly disagree. I mean, i- it's right there. If you go, you see it. You know, and you feel it, so I just think that, uh, I think it would be worthwhile to give it a try, because that opens a lot of doors, and not just to funding, but to, uh, other things that might be of help in, uh, pursuing these matters further. So, um, so that was why I thought it would be worth it for us to uh, put together a package for the Bishop Museum and go and ask them to change their opinion, position.
Uh, no, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that we, we, we bring that, that situation up, because that could be what our trustees would have to be working on in the future. Um, just one more quick thing, um, can you? I think Rupert's gonna say a little bit. Can you put up the slides I, I, I shared with you this morning? So, as we all am aware, um, we saw the pictures of all the lush green grass, remember, we got it all grown back, so you're gonna see now when it floods, yeah, like this is the flooding, this is what it looks like now. And, um, so it goes under the, the road and into the, the Heau, the next one, please. So this is the other side of the street, and then there's one more on the top. There, okay, so it flows, but there's a roadway on the bottom half of the picture, it flows underneath and goes inside. If you can see the green grass to the right and left of that, the first pond, that's all water, and it's dripping, it's going all down into that, that pond down there. And then from that pond, they, they dug a, a culvert that goes to the other side, that drains it to the parking lot. So, yeah, same situation as the Pa'akai, of course, they're draining the water into the Heau. That's them, you know, since we saw it, remember, it was all green, but they're, they're actually working, if you see on the left-hand side, it's all clear. But no matter what they do, it's gonna come back, no matter, it's the, the water, that's that's how it's being developed, so, um, all, the water from all the developments above is this is the result of it, and, um, uh, today Rupert is here, and I wanted him to share a little bit about the conflicts and situations that you guys been having with these floods.
All right, sounds good. All right, let's get to the point on this flooding at Kane Olouuma. What happened is that in the early sixties, the mayor of Kauai, Anton Vidina, gave up the road along the shoreline to put a Wai'auai Hotel in Keuna on the ocean. By doing so, the natural drain would go into the fish ponds that went all the way down from the Wai'auai to the Sheraton Hotel. That was the natural drain. It would filter itself before it would go into the ocean. The road that you seen was an illegal road that the county put in in the early sixties. I think it was sixty. And it was supposed to be taken down in sixty-five. And I believe whatever they tracked was Hawaiian homelands. Then it became fee simple, not fee simple, but on the market. And going back into this whole area over here, the drainage was the issue from the Kanakas that lived there before. The parking lot that flooded out was a six-hundred-foot fish pond. That's what you're looking at, the fish pond. See, nobody knows what was there. And there was all salt beds that used to be there. The county used the hurricane debris and covered most of those things up. And the hurricane debris is still there to this day. Okay, so it becomes very technical from the culture's point of view. So in nineteen ninety-seven, my partner Billy Kau'e Olau'ee told me that come to help them because the state went after them. So I told him, did you folks pulley before you folks entered the He'au? He didn't. So I said, to go forth, we must all get together and pulley. And then after we pulley, I told all of these seven of them, one of you in this group will leave us in three years, and you know who you are, before he left us. And in three years, it happened. So the other six guys was very surprised that I knew what was gonna take place three years later. Okay. So as we were preparing ourselves there, I learned the true archaeologists of Hawaii. And the Bishop Museum was using, let me take one step back. Henry Ke'kauuna is the only archaeologist in the history of Hawaii, never went to college. So his knowledge and his wisdom of our past was very unusual to foresee the future. So by studying him, I told my partner that I would help them. Because Henry Ke'kauuna seen Hawaii back in nineteen fifty-nine to where we are today. So all of our sites are very important to us because he gave us the backbone of who we are as a people on this island. I'm honored to recognize Henry Ke'kauuna as a very talented man. And I had the opportunity in nineteen fifty-eight to meet him. So how I got to meet him is that there were two Republicans on Kauai who wanted the native people, Kanakas themselves, to vote for statehood and agree that statehood. So all them that were sitting there, my granddad said, why would you want us to be an American? Because it's a country without a culture. And they'll all come here to become you. It was very instrumental to me in setting my my goal where I am today. So in nineteen forty-nine, they sent me to Honolulu to learn the Western way. And that's how I got to know trustee Hululunzi. So anyway, I played in a palace from nineteen forty-nine to nineteen fifty-nine. Hawaiian homes was on a basement. I walked through that whole palace from the basement to the chamber and onto the roof. There was an opportunity I never thought would be in myself as I grew older to become a kapuna. So when I got involved now with Kani Olooma, I'm looking at the past. And now I'm going back to Kani Olooma because Henry Ke'kauuna said how important it is to preserve our culture sites. So we started getting involved there. John Lake came there and told us that one day we'll all go to Pu'okala. And I was very surprised by his comment. And we all went to Pu'okala. We took twenty-one guys from our island, from Nehua, Nehau, and Kauai. That is the Kingdom of Hawaii, Kauai. By doing so, we united the islands. By uniting the islands, Kani Olooma played a role. And in that role, it made us become self-confident in what lies ahead on our unification to know who we are as a race. So my speech at Pu'okala, John Lake said, I mean, Sam Kai said on the right hand side of me, and Ke'omoku Kapu said on the left side of me. And I had the opportunity to give my presentation to all of them that was there from the Polynesian people that came to Pu'okala. And I said, our piku is lepo. We don't know who we are as a people because we lost our identity by not identifying ourselves as Kanaka. And in our language, there's no such person as a Hawaiian. So it really brings confusion and misrepresenting on how we look at ourselves spiritually and physically. So when we went to Pu'okala, we brought the Pohaku from Kani Olooma. It was a summer lineup in a triangle inside Kani Olooma. From that triangle, and then the other triangle is on the west side that becomes the some the winter salsas and the summer salsas. So we took the stone from a summer salsas. It was a key that was there waiting to be placed at Pu'okala. The ke'una who built Pu'okala came from the south side of Kauai. And he told, come here, mayor, we'll honor you with this He'au, but you will never come to Kauai. It was something the ke'una from Kauai foresee. That's why I said, Henry Ke'kauuna, if you read his notes and understand what he was there for, for all of us to know our past. So now with this flooding and everything down there, the Army Corps of Engineers came, the county never sent one person. I went. I learned the layout of the land. And we testified in front of Land Use Commission. And they demanded the landowner show us the drainage plan. So that's why I'm confused. I know Bridgetown is doing their own thing. But when we went in front of Land Use Commission, it was before Bridgetown got involved. So we kind of established what was taking place there. So on the opposite side of the road by Kani Olooma is an amphitheater. That's where they should have put the catchment basin, face it west into the other catchment basin. But the part is that the storm drain that they put in there cannot handle the flow of the water. So they'll never ever have a drainage plan. So from a culture's point of view, we are at bondage by their movement on the government's end. So now this project there, which Bridgetown is fighting, is the last project before it gets to Kani Olooma. So when we testified in front of Land Use Commission, they told the landowner to show the drainage plan. They never showed the drainage plan. To this day, they still doesn't have a drainage plan. So now, when you see the place flood, where's the plan? Because it should have never flooded to begin with. So on Kauai, these three things happening over here, the salt ponds, cocoa palms, and Kani Olooma. Every single one flooded. Reason, no plan. So our island, our mayor, doesn't want to help us because that's not his project. So the previous mayor was Kanaka. He took the role to help us bring the He'au back to where it is. And then when the administration change and COVID came, a problem started. Now we back there, and I'm getting ready to pump all the water out from the He'au and flood the parking lot again. And I'm gonna do them this Saturday. So for the records, everybody know what's happening. It's better to say, I'm sorry, and I didn't know.
Thank you, Rupert. Any questions, trustee?
Just a last wrap up. So so the direction, we don't know what we doing right now. I think right now we might, the next steps might be the Bishop Museum and trying to make sure that we can get that recognition from the Bishop Museum. That's one standpoint. What Rupert was representing too is the recognition they got from moving that rock. You cannot just take rocks and put them into it. There's no, you cannot do that anywhere. But they they did it. They took the best water, too. It comes from Kauai by Aloha and the best salt too. Also to make sure the Big Island guys know what we have, our resources. And they did that just for unification. That was with a while back, along with our America volume. So Sherry, one last wrap up. So what would happen if we have to talk with the Bishop Museum? What what would be the steps?
Uh, get an appointment. And to see, I think we don't need to organize the reports. But you know, that would just be a more of a library project. I don't think there's anything new, is there Rupert? There's nothing new that's been done on archaeological sites there?
Yeah, you see, the Bishop Museum on the problem was there was an archaeologist back in the early nineteen hundred, Bennett, I think was his name. He drew just lines and said, Olooma was over there. But Henry Ke'kauuna drew the map of Kani Olooma. And he made in the He'au these twenty-three idol sites. So the history of Kani Olooma, too, these are the archaeologists. This was a Malahini coming to Hawaii and telling us this is the way he looks at. And that's why Bishop Museum didn't want to recognize us. But Bishop Museum admitted now that we were right. So if we were right, then we were placed on the historical federal recognition. Flooding in Kani Olooma will never take place again.
I think that's what we have to support is to move ahead with changing Bishop Museum's position on that that area on the Hala. It may be that there's new archaeologists about this. This is a book I just got, and it's called Kuliana and Commitment. It's about doing archaeology work, but listening to the voices of indigenous peoples and not just going to the library. So there may be, there may be somebody, you know, maybe this this person could help us too. But I think that we should definitely take that up right away because if it's Rupert saying they've changed their position, it would be great if we could reapply and be designated as National Historic Site. I mean, that opens the door to money, to funding, to help from federal agencies. So I think would be really good.
Well, thank you, Sherry. Thank you, Rupert. Thank you, Justi Ahoona.
Thank you.
Mahalo, Rupert.
Okay, moving on to our next item. I'm gonna call on Pohana Stacy.
Mahalo, Chair, trustees. I'm seeking an approval for action item that was presented to the Board of Trustees back in 2020. In your packet, you'll see on pages five and six and twenty and twenty-two, there was an action item brought before the trustees regarding directional outcomes for Manai Maoliola. And today I'm seeking your review and approval of revising the current economic stability directional outcome. If we could bring up the slide, please, for reference.
Did you want the action item or the PowerPoint?
The PowerPoint, please. Mahalo.
This is Mimo?
Yes, so you can go to the next slide, please. Okay, so this is what I would like, Chair and trustees, if you, for your consideration, to do a revision to the current economic stability directional outcome. So although this was approved back in 2020, the current directional outcome is replicated from the quality housing directional outcome. And when I came on board and I was reviewing the language in the strategic plan, it became very apparent that the the strategic directional outcome for quality housing and economic stability were the same. And so when I asked Carla, you know, who was charged with the strategic plan at the time, why was that that language duplicated? Because it doesn't make sense, right, to have a housing directional outcome for economic stability? And she, you know, shared with me that that was an error that had never been corrected. And why it's important for us to correct it at this point is twofold. Once, we want to make sure that there's alignment throughout our document with our directional outcome and all the cascading strategic objectives. But I also use the strategic directional outcome for the job descriptions. As we are looking to hire directors with subject matter expertise in these very specific areas, I want to make sure that the directional outcome makes sense and is reflective of the strategic objectives that are cascading from them. So you see with the the current directional outcome, it is very housing specific. Strengthen capability for Ohana to meet living needs, including housing. Strengthen effective implementation of the Hawaiian Homes Commission Act. What I'd like for your consideration and approval is a proposed revision that states strengthened economic capability, resilience, and care for our Ohana, Native Hawaiian communities, and Hawaiian-owned businesses to build and sustain generational wealth and economic systems that are regenerative, sustainable, and reflective of ike kupuna. And so this revision is taken from language in the subsequent strategic objectives. So again, ensuring that there's alignment with the directional outcome and all of the objectives that cascade from it.
Any questions? So can you put the motion up?
Chair, I'd like to move to approve and revise to revise strategic outcome under the Oha Manai Maoliola Strategic Plan 2020 to 2035 Economic Stability Strategic Direction to State Strategic Outcome. Strengthen economic capability and resilience for Ohana, Native Hawaiian communities, and Hawaiian-owned businesses Native Hawaiian communities and Hawaiian owned businesses to build and sustain generational wealth and economical systems that are regenerative, sustainable and reflective of Ike Kupuna.
It's, it's been moved and seconded. Um, any more discussion? Trustee Galutaria?
Stacy, by removing the um, uh, Hawaiian Homes Commission Act piece. Oh, what is the specific desire here? Is that to broaden, broaden the entire objective?
No, the, the, the action is to actually keep the housing language regarding Hawaiian homes with housing under that directional outcome and take housing out of the economic development. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, roll call vote?
Sorry, minute Chair. Kapuana, are we also looking at potentially revising the housing um, section two?
Um, you know, that wasn't the action item before you today. Um, as I, as I look at the current um, language and its subsequent uh, strategic objectives, I didn't have any issue with that. I think if, if trustees want to revisit that because you want to broaden then that out, then I think we should have that conversation. But in terms of today, it was really just revising and correcting that duplication of language.
Not supportive. Thank you.
Trustee Trask?
Yes, I have the following comments. We're looking now at the strategic plan we had put in place in two thousand and twenty. We started working on it the previous year. So this, this action item is meant to address that plan. But last year, we started a training program with Vjoy. The purpose of that was to put in place certain policies that would guide us in decision making. For example, one of the things that Vjoy recommended, and this was in the first meeting in March, was that we bring oversight of the assets under the, the development of which is under the strategic plan back to the board. And that was sixty days ago, and we still haven't brought this matter back to the board. This action item makes changes to continue the administration oversight of it. But number one, before we move back to looking at strategic plan amendments, we should do as Vjoy has advised us, bring oversight of the portfolios back to the board so that we can then make strategic plan amendments to the two thousand and twenty. What we're doing now is saying, all right, Admin, you continue to exercise the decision making. Number one.
Chair, if I may.
But number two, uh, when I look at where we're going to go in terms of the actual structure, I'm not sure how we're going to put, we're going to match our training. Because a lot of the strategic plan, if you look at it, has to do with trustee oversight of the assets, some in portfolio and some in real estate. But we should at least follow the advice of our trainer. Right now, an important decision is to the board with regards to our strategic plan which is about seventy percent asset management. Why are we doing this when our own current advisor said bring the asset oversight portfolio and real property back to the board? So that we can then make decisions. But I read this as a decision that we're implementing in two thousand and twenty-four based on a two thousand and twenty management plan that we already changed. We're getting advice from Vjoy on it, and we haven't finished that training.
Apuhana, you, you want to respond to that?
Mahalo. Um, I, I think, trust, well, I know that trustee Trask is um, confusing um, the action item on the table with the the consultation that Vjoy provides to the board regarding investments. Um, so again, I just want to reorient the, the trustees to the action at hand is to ask for a revision of duplicative language that was created for housing and then applied to economic stability. That's the action at hand. Uh, I'm not revising any of the subsequent uh, strategic objectives. All the language does is revise it based on the strategic objectives that were already approved by the trustees in two thousand and twenty. Mahalo.
Roll call vote?
Just for the record, there was no one signed up to speak on this action item. Uh, trustee Ahuna?
Yes.
Trustee Akaka?
Aye.
Trustee Akina?
Aye.
Trustee Alapa?
Yes.
Trustee Galutaria?
Aye.
Trustee Souza?
Aye.
Trustee Trask?
No.
Trustee Wahee?
Yes.
Chair Hulu Lindsay?
Yes.
You have eight yes votes and one no vote.
Thank you. Moving on to our next item, three D strategy and implementation paya structure presentation. Dehuwa, is anyone signed up to speak on this item?
No one is signed up to speak on this item.
Stacy?
Mahalo Chair. Lehuwa, um, could I ask that you bring up the slides again, please?
Yes.
So um, this slide should look vaguely familiar from October when I shared this approach with trustees. And this was the roadmap, if you will, of how I was going to uh, guide the administration through the implementation process for Manai Maoliola. And so if, if you'll just give me a, a few minutes to, to reorient you to this, uh, to this plan and the implementation approach. So I had shared that at the, the far left, we have our strategic plan which has our, our vision, our mission, our strategic outcomes. And the owner of this plan is the Board of Trustees, right? You folks, uh, you voted on it. And basically, this is a reflection of the direction, the strategic direction you expect administration to take the agency um, in so that we may best uh, better the conditions of Native Hawaiians. If you follow uh, to the right, we are going to be executing on tactical plans. And those tactical plans are basically uh, detailed high level actions which will also have um, information regarding um, who will we uh, plan to collaborate with, the resources that are going to be required, the alignment to the strategic plan. And they will be done in the various uh, directional outcomes, education pathways, health outcomes, quality housing and economic stability. Tactical plans will also inform how we put together our biennium um, budget bill which is um, we, we will be going into that um, planning effort in the next few months. And then if you follow it to the right, um, those tactical plans are then developed into more detailed action plans. And the, the action plans detail implementation, implementable actions for each high level tactic. So for every strategic outcome, we can have various tactics on how we expect to achieve these, these objectives. And for each tactic, we have to have a detailed action plan so that we can track progress. And from those action plans is how we will end up de- um, developing our evaluation and reporting mechanisms so that we can keep trustees apprised of our progress to each of the strategic objectives. But also how we are moving the plan um, uh, based off of our, our major milestones as well as how we are ensuring um, staff are being evaluated on their performance. And the way that we report uh, staff uh, performance is going to be on our new performance management system that our administration is working very hard on procuring. Um, we don't currently have a performance management system, but we are aiming to have one um, for the, the new fiscal year um, to ensure accountability and transparency. And also to ensure there's alignment between the strategic work that's expected and the performance of our staff. Um, also part of our evalu- evaluation and reporting will be to provide ongoing reports to the board quarterly as well as through the annual report. So again, ensuring that there's, there's transparency and accountability from the administration to the board's strategic plan. We can go to the next slide. So one of the things that I had mentioned to the board um, back in October when I um, provided that implementation plan, that I thought it was extremely critical that form follows function. And what I mean by that is functionally, if, if we know what we need to have happen and in the timeframe that we needed to happen, we need to formulate ourselves, we need to have a structure that can support that. And so what I have in front of you right now is the uh, executive leadership structure. Uh, so cascading from me are two executive administrative assistants. Um, and those two administrative, executive admin assistants support various uh, executive leaders. Um, and so we have under, under me, supporting administration is our general counsel, our chief financial officer, our chief operating officer, our newly uh, instituted uh, position for a senior director of Hawaiian cultural affairs and a new senior director of strategy and implementation. Okay, next slide please. So, when I initially had shared with uh, the trustees, the current structure of what then was known as strategy management, um, the Office of Strategy Management. So that's highlighted in yellow. And just that even the name itself, strategy management is very passive to me. Um, it's less about managing and it's really about uh, creating and execution and implementation of strategy. And so um, I wanted a very action oriented name for, for the office. And so it was changed from Office of Strategy Management to the Office of Strategy and Implementation. Um, highlighted in that yellow was the, the strategy, excuse me, the structure that I inherited. And you'll see the inherent issue already, um, just the way that it, that it was structured, that you had a, a director. Under the director, you had a manager and a manager uh, overseeing three people. And the three people were um, strategy management analyst. So when you look at the how aspirational um, our plan is, Manai Maoliola has twenty-six strategic objectives. Each strategic objective is going to have numerous tactics which are going to need, you know, action plans as I mentioned. A team of four is not going to be able to do a heavy lift like that. Not in the, not in, with the urgency that we need to have, and certainly not with the due diligence that's going to be required to execute such a lofty plan. Um, the other concern that I had with the, the structure that I inherited is that you, it was very top heavy. You had two two leaders over three staff. Um, and I, I thought it would, would be better to um, to have more supporting staff to be able to execute on the work. But more importantly, you'll see that the previous structure had a manager that was a generalist. Very difficult for a generalist to have Ike on housing, education, economics and health. And if you, if you read our health outcome, you're really looking for a unicorn. Because it's everything from uh, healthy lands, healthy people, spirituality, eh, uh. And so, you know, God bless Kuike for taking on that job. Uh, because it really does take subject matter experts to lead these various directional outcomes that have been put forth by the, by the board. They're um, they're big lifts, but they require um, expertise acumen in, in those areas. It requires people that have networks that are in place that understand how to collaborate and partners in these arenas. And so in rethinking the structure, again, how does form follow function? I restructured it in a way that I felt could really execute our plan with fidelity and urgency. So to the right, you'll see that under me, I do have a, a senior director of strategy and implementation. Under the, the senior director are four directors who have subject matter expertise in these areas. Um, so now we have a director of education, culture-based learning. Um, that, that position is um, already in process and um, we have selected somebody and hope, hoping to have that person on board shortly. Director of UV well-being and Aina Momona, that is uh, Kuike, which has, he has hit the ground running. I mean, day one, and I think you've all experienced that already. But that to me speaks to the value of subject matter expertise. We need special, specialists, not generalists when it comes to this work. Um, Director of Housing, Infrastructure and Sustainability, we are still recruiting. And a Director of Economic and Business Resilience has been on, has been on hold based off of the actions that the board just took. So that with this renewed revised language, I can now create a, a job description that matches the work that we expect this director to do. Under each of these directors, there are going to be two strategy consultants. As I, as I um, took you through the implementation approach. Again, the, the tactical planning, the action planning, and then the, the work that's going to be required for each of these um, directional outcomes. Um, there's going to be a lot of um, inter-agency or collaborative work. So that black band that you see at the very bottom where it calls out community engagement, beneficiary services, finance. All of, all of our paya will be engaged in tactical planning and um, action planning. They have to be. Our, our teams are going to be too small again, um, to be able to do this lift by themselves. And they themselves are going to need uh, additional str- uh, strategic um, uh, input as well as um, subject matter expertise from our different paya for them to be able to put plans that um, make sense, that are doable and um, that we can actually um, execute on. So, again, the left was the, the structure that I inherited and to the right is the structure that we currently have in place that I feel um, is the best structure to take us forward. And shared, um, so that's currently the, the state, uh, state of affairs uh, for administration and how we plan on implementing. And I um, yield to the board for any questions.
Trustees, do you have any questions? Trustee Akina?
Thank you Kapuana. Appreciate the hard work and diligence that you and team are going to be putting into providing us the information we need to monitor the, our progress in terms of Manai Maoliola. Um, I've had a kind of perennial question since I became a trustee. And I think you're well equipped coming from state government to, to be able to respond to it. The first part of it is, how does our approach to strategic planning dovetail with the state's own program, PPBS Planning, Programming and Budgeting System? And in particular, I'm looking for how we can actually measure the outcomes of our expenditures as we do the budgeting process and decide where to put our money. But will, will we um, I think you get what I'm saying. So I'll appreciate your response, but let me give you an example. I like the fact that we're very specific on some of our objectives, like strategy number five, uh, quality housing, five point two. Increased numbers and percent of Native Hawaiians who own housing that meets their Ohana's financial and well-being needs. That requires data. That, that requires knowing who has housing, who doesn't have housing, how much of the need exists and and it presumes that going into a budgeting season will have a certain baseline. And at, at the end of that budgeting season, we'll be able to compare where we're at with where we started. That, that's what I'm asking about. Will we have that capacity? And uh, be able to do the kinds of things that a PPBS is supposed to do?
Mahalo trustee. So, yes, there, there should always be a line of sight between the objectives that we're trying to accomplish, the tactical plans, the action plans and the, the spend, right? And, and be able to tell that story and share that um, that progress as, as we go along. You know, the, the plan goes to twenty You know, the, the plan goes to 2035 and so, we are looking at breaking down the remainder of, of the years by phases. It doesn't serve us well to wait till the end of 2035 to, to track our progress, to measure our progress. So, we need to have phase it in a way that if we need to pivot, we can do so accordingly, based on the data that we're receiving, right? And that data looks like many things, right? It could be the amount of money we're spending to accomplish it. It could be the lack of traction with community. I mean, there's many things that, that would require us to, to change course. However, I think specifically to your question, I don't think we're going to mirror necessarily the state process because OHA does have our own process in terms of budgeting, going in front of the resource management committee, the BAE committee. So, as teams are coming up with their tactics, you know, depending on if it's a joint, if it needs to go to the joint committees or either R M or BAE, we want to make sure that trustees are aware of directionally where we're going with the, the tactical plans. And so, those will come across to you folks through action items. So you'll be very aware of where administration is going. Because those tactical plans also require, if there's a resource ask, that should be added into the, to the action item. And then, once we have approval to move forward, we will then move on to the tactical plan, excuse me, the action plans that are much more detailed. But the, the tactical plans will have due diligence put into them. So anything that comes to trustees, similarly, when administration comes to me, it should be a close to final state. When it gets to trustees, it should be at a, a final state for your review. So then that means that we have done our due diligence, that, you know, we have worked with research and evaluation. We have worked with external parties if need be, to ensure that the action item that we are bringing forward to you as a, as a tactical plan is fully vetted and is ready for review, discussion and and decision for this board. So that, that's the due diligence upfront. And then just know that as we continue through the process, through tactical planning and action planning, again, our reporting back to the board is our accountability to you folks. So that we continuously have a line of sight for you folks to know what progress is being made or not. And if progress is not being made, that's okay. We just need to be able to explain why and then have that, have that discussion. And so, that's, that's how we're going to proceed.
Thank you, Kapu Hana. I appreciate that. I, I think we very much want to be able to determine whether we're getting the return on our investment for the monies we, we actually invest. For example, part of my frustration sometimes is that our evaluation of the grants that we give out is on a micro level. We, we do due diligence to tell whether or not a grantee has executed the grant properly and so forth. That's pretty good. But whether the grants we're giving contribute to the accomplishment of an objective such as putting people into more houses and changing the marker of where Hawaiians are there, that's kind of not, that, that's not something that comes before us when we do the budgeting. So are you saying that we will be able to have, you're, you're moving toward giving us that kind of evaluation and feedback when we make budget decisions?
Yes, because it will be in the action plan and so it'll come across to you folks through action items. So, a couple of things on that note. I, I shared with the team and I continue to reiterate that as we look at the strategic outcomes, we want to address root cause issues, not the symptoms. And so, we're being very critical about, you know, what we're going to do, why we're doing it, how, you know, basically it's the five Ws and, and, and the how. And, but because we're going to be putting resources and it's not just funding, even our human resources, anytime any of our teams spend on this is money, beneficiary money, and we want to make sure that it's, it's well spent. And so, we want to make sure that we're looking at transformational types of tactic, tactics and actions. And so, whatever we bring forward to you is really the best thinking that the teams are putting forth based off of the due diligence, right, which would include the research and the data. You know, we, we want to, we want to move the meter. And one of the things that I'd like to share with the board is, you know, our, our approach with grants and grant, anytime there's a grant that comes, you know, through a tactic. So, just so I can be clear, a tactic can be a policy. It could be a grant, it could be a contract for service, it could be a program or, you know, it, it could look like many things. But please feel certain that, or please know and you can be assured that if there is a grant request as a tactic, it will come through R and M. But what I do want to do is shift a little bit on how we have been approaching grants. So instead of the mass call out and say, how do you fit into one of our strategic outcomes? We say we have a very specific tactic that we believe can be very transformational in housing. And we would like to put a grant program together to meet that specific thing. And so, you know, it, it's not going to be wide and broad as, you know, we're currently, but very precision and focused because we believe if we have grant funds in this particular tactic, we will move the meter. That's the approach.
That's very exciting. That, that's the kind of intentionality that will accomplish our, our mission. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Trustee Trask.
When I looked at the data for section D, I felt it was very vague and broad, but wasn't specific enough. And what I was looking at was housing. If we go back to the plan, the strategic plan we're looking at, which I already told you I disagree with, it's not 2020. But we're already changing that plan. Now, we are moving now in a new area for housing. It wasn't covered in the 2020 to 2035 strategic plan. Our previous OHA approach to housing was to have a housing division. We went through that for a long time, but it didn't work out. In the last year and a half, we've returned to housing, but it's under a different structure and model. Number one, it's in partnership with our sister agency DHHL that has the waitlist. So number two, it does serve Hawaiian beneficiaries on the waitlist. Number three, OHA trustees decided that we weren't going to create a new housing, but rather look for partnership. And that's what we've done with two housing pigs that expired, but it's because Kali hasn't secured the land. But we already put together Kupuna Housing Pig. There's three trustees on it, trustee Luana and trustee Dan. That, the, the criteria on that is qualifies for federal programming. Litek or Nahazda is in, serves need of beneficiary. These are all Kupuna on the waiting list, who can qualify for a loan because they don't have a lifespan of 55 years. What I'm saying here is that when we look at the strategy and implementation, especially on housing, the language that we have in this report doesn't even refer to what we're doing with housing. And if you read it generally, our commitment to our Kupuna housing will fall through the cracks. So I don't, I mean, it's one thing to have a lot of language that looks like you have a strategy, but I don't want this to not include. We need to include what we're doing on housing now with this, this effort to work with our agency, our sister agency and also Luna Lilo. Because we have a commitment there and I don't see it in these materials.
Thank you, trustee Trask. We'll have Puhana look at that possibility of adding that. Trustee Souza? Okay, yeah, we're willing to look at whatever suggestions. Trustee Akaka?
Mahalo. My question regarding this PIA structure, it, it does feel like a restructuring slash reorganization of our staffing and so forth. And in terms of budgeting and so forth, when would we be looking at that? Cause would you say this is a reorganization happening?
Puhana?
Yes, trustee. Based off of what is required to do the work and what I inherited, the answer is yes.
And when would we be looking at what that budget difference would look like?
I can put that together and bring it back in front of the board.
Any other questions? Trustee Galateria?
All the chair. In, in a perfect world, how do you envision this rolling out in terms of a timeline? We want to be done by year's end? We want to be filling all of the slots?
Mahalo. You know, ultimately, it would be great if we could have this team put together by the fiscal year, by the new fiscal year, July 1st. That might be very ambitious, although I do want to, mahalo Everett and Corey, who have been just amazing in assisting me in helping to, you know, get as many of our, our folks onboard. July 1st would be my answer, but that's not to say, again, you know, based off of recruitment and, you know, other factors, people giving their notice, things like that. It, it may extend into the new, at least into the first quarter of the fiscal. Mahalo.
So in essence, it's been ongoing. Stacy has hired people in these positions. I don't know if we should, and in answer to trustee Akaka, Puhana doesn't feel that it requires the board's approval. So, is there any feeling about that from the board? Trustee Akina?
I agree and I appreciate the initiative that Kapu Hana is taking to carry out her duties.
Trustee Souza?
All the chair, I also agree. And you know, Kapu Hana, based on what you did so far in the few short months, I don't believe it's ambitious at all for you. I think we can do it by fiscal year. Like you said, it just depends on the timeline for the candidates, right? But um, yeah, I believe you're coming to us and presenting this because it's something that you need to do your job. And for us, we need to support that. So, thank you.
Trustee Trask.
Yeah, I just, I'm not sure what the follow-up is because we just voted yes on item C, which is strategic plan. How does the changes on D get implemented or included in somehow in, in the strategic plan? Is, are we considering this to be an amendment to the strategic plan?
The first action item was on the strategic plan amendment. But this is on putting it into effect and this is how our Puhana feels she needs to structure the administration in, in order to accommodate.
I understand it, Hulu. I understand it. What I'm asking is how are we going to do it? If we're going to say that we're going to now make amendments to strategy and implementation plan for the PIA, the PIA's are part of the old strategic plan that we passed in 2020. So, when we get through number D, my anticipation is we would put that, that strategy and implementation for the PIA's is going to become then a part of the larger strategic plan. Is that correct?
Puhana? You know, I'm going to ask Everett to weigh in if that's required to be inserted into the existing strategic plan.
You know, I just don't see how it's going to be done is what I'm asking. We vote on this, somehow we have to do it. But when you put C before D, I don't know, is that, does that mean that when the strategy is done, we have to go back and amend the whole old strategic plan?
Everett?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. And good morning, everyone. I think to trustee Trask's question, the amendment to the strategic plan language for the economic stability direction was, I'm sorry, for the outcome, was for a change to the, the verbiage there, but it's not changing the overall direction for that strategic plan and the, the strategies that come under it. So I think it's just updating that language in the, in the strategic plan. As to the structure, the roles of OHA are described in the current strategic plan as relating to advocate, researcher, community engager and asset manager. So those really aren't changing, given that, you know, the, the earlier amendment by the board. Those roles remain and it's really just this new strategy implementation division is being stood up to kind of help direct our activities in those, in those aforementioned roles.
You know what I'm trying to point out here, Everett? We have some things moving that are not in the strategic plan. One of them is the Kupuna Housing. We've had two pigs. The call to OHA for each one is at 1 million. So when we commit to three, starting with Moluka'i and then Koa'i and Big Island, it's a 3 million commitment there. I'm trying to point out that the 3 million, while we took the pigs that far, was not, was not put in the budget. The question that came up previously is, there is going to be budget impact. We know that. But I don't want to lose track of one, of the housing because the housing is not built into the budget. But I feel that we have a commitment and have done two pigs and it's going to move with Moluka'i going first. I'm going to need a million dollars for that. At some point, it has to come to the board. But it's not currently in our strategy implementation budget and it's not in the OHA strategic plan. That's why I'm bringing it up. Because Kupuna Housing is a big one for three trustees on this board. And it's going to take us 3 million dollars, but I didn't, we don't have it in the current budget. And I don't think we would seek it until we get to that point. I'm hoping Kupuna Housing will go forward. I think it will, but we don't know when. So our, you know, I mean, I just want to point it out because that's a, that's a 3 million commitment, but that and some other commitments we've made recently are not in the current budget, not.
Puhana? Mahalo Chair. If I may direct the trustees to your the materials that you have regarding the strategic plan. On page five, strategic direction, quality housing, strategy six, support implementation of the Hawaiian Income Homes Commission Act and other efforts to meet the housing needs of Oha. 6.1, increased affordable non-traditional housing options in communities of Oha's choice. Increased housing unit supply on Hawaiian homelands. Let me repeat that. 6.2, increased housing unit supply on Hawaiian homelands. This would include Kupuna Housing. 6.3, decreased rate of native Hawaiian Ohana out of state migration. So the Kupuna Housing Pig that trustee is referring to would definitely be a tactic of strategy six, 6.2. When that action plan comes together, when the action plan, when the action plan is created, when the action plan is created, as I mentioned to trustee Akina, the resources for those respective the resources for those respective actions will be reflected and it will go to R and M.
No, I just
That is the process.
I, no, no, that is the process you're still suggesting, Stacy. And what I am saying is, look at page five. Read what you just read. We have already taken action for Kupuna housing. So under six point two, it should say increase housing on Hawaiian homelands. Pursue Ku- Kupuna housing in partnership with DHHL and Luna Lilo. Because these things have come on the agenda. It's not a general pronouncement. It's talking about what we have committed to so that we don't lose track of the work in the community when we change administration. You know, I'd like to get down to the commitment to the people. When you look at strategy six, support implementation of Hawaiian Homes Act. That's what we said we're gonna do in nineteen seventy-eight, but we never actually got in to Kupuna housing. And for my island, increase housing unit supply. It doesn't end here. It should state that we have created two Kupuna housing pigs in partnership with Luna Lilo, DHHL, federal housing, Nahasta, and Light Tech with OHA providing not more than one million. These kinds of things don't show us the direction we're going. Leave it out of strategy six. Put it in.
No, because the board did not rule on it yet. There's been a lot of talk uh among the pigs, but it has not come to the board yet. We can talk all we like.
Get it to the board. Each time I have tried for over a year, I can't get it on the agenda. Months of work. What happened to the, all the work we did with the two Kupuna housing pigs? Put it in here. Why are we not caring for the commitments? Go back. We have two. Housing pigs.
Mahalo, Chair. Um, I just wanna make sure that the the board is very clear on the the difference between a strategy and a tactic. So the strategy of uh uh strategy six, six point two is adequate, more than adequate. You wanna leave it broad. You don't wanna get super specific. Because Kupuna housing is gonna be one tactic or one way in which we accomplish increased housing unit supply in Hawaiian homelands. So again, a tactic is gonna be one way in which we will accomplish this strategy. One, and the due diligence, Chair, to your point, will need to be done. Once it's done, that action item will come before R and M.
Yes.
Mahalo.
Juste Susa?
Malatir, I just wanna reiterate that uh there has been no commitment. So for everyone watching at home, for everyone in this boardroom, there's been no commitments. Nothing has been presented to the board. Wanna make it clear that we are committed to housing. We're committed to Kupuna housing, most especially and foremost, right? That's priority, but until it comes to the board, nothing has happened. We haven't signed contracts, committed to anything. Or due diligence. I think the individual agencies, which we're not gonna name, because even that is not fully committed yet, right? So they're doing their own due diligence. We're doing our own. Until there's a proposed plan, there is nothing. And because there's no proposed plan or action taken by the board, it is not currently in any budget. Because we don't know what the budget is, right? So I just wanna make it clear for the record. But trustee Trask, I also do agree with you. Kupuna housing that should be right up forefront of what we do. So, wow, thank you.
Thank you, trustee Susa. Okay, I'm gonna move on because this was just the presentation by Pohanah. Not requiring any action by the board. So uh we'll move on to the last item for new business. Lehua, do we have anyone signed up to speak on this item?
No one has signed up to speak on this item.
Okay, um. It's review of Peregrine Realty Partners' proposal for OHA real estate strategy processes and governance work. Uh, Pohanah?
Mahalo, Chair trustees. I'd like to call up Tim Wong and Sam Chung to share the proposal for Peregrine Realty.
Aloha trustees, we want to just reiterate, I think, why we um wanted to go forward with a contract with Peregrine. And one of the reasons is, is basically to answer the audit responses. So when the state auditor came in and audited the land department, he came up with some suggestions. Some of the suggestions were improvements for administration and some of the improvements for on the um board of trustees side. The board of trustees recommendations that the state auditor really focused on was to come up with a real estate strategy of governance as well as policy and procedures. And so this is gonna, this um contract is gonna focus on those things. I'm gonna pass it over to Sam um to to discuss the contract. And the proposal.
Good morning trustees, um, you know, there's various phases of the proposal that we received from Peregrine. And the 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 principal that's working on it has done uh work uh for as a subcontractor. Um, so there is some um you know, built up credibility in in terms of quality of work, uh deliverables and and timing. Um, the the first phase, and just so you guys know, the the proposal is on a you know, essentially a month-to-month basis. So if OHA trustees or administration is is not happy with the work, we could terminate uh with thirty-day notice. So it is based on performance uh and it's based on OHA's satisfactory, what the work does produce as well as the timing. The uh the first phase, which they will get going, is on real estate strategies and and it really covers um six different parts, but each of the parts will have um a a written documentation, um rationale behind it as well as how to make it a reality or uh operational, uh make it operational. So, you know, it's um and there's the six steps that that that's part of the real estate strategy is um uh the first part is looking at what OHA currently has in terms of what the current strategy is, i- if if uh looking at any kind of documentation, uh looking at the real estate holdings, uh summarizing it. Um, and then the second part is the market assessment. Um, and and a a big part of this will look at uh OHA's peer groups, including you know, Commitment Schools, um uh Queen Emma, um Weinberg. But you will also look at some of the more private entities like AMV and James Campbell, um also quasi state agencies like ACDA, DHHL. So it's gonna look at different varieties of organizations and compare, you know, and and really pull out what's what's good and what's bad and what the recommendation for OHA's real estate strategy is. Um, the third part involves looking at the risk. What's the financial risk? What's the operational risk? What's the market li- uh risk, legislature uh risk? Uh, and the fourth part is looking at the capital assessment. Um, looking at the current real estate ho- uh agreement, looking at the current cash flow and and looking at, you know, other uh financing opportunities or or uh equity opportunities. And then the the fifth part is looking at what the current state of real estate strategy is and what the desired outcome is. And then based on all of that is really drafting the uh real estate strategies for OHA uh board's approval. So that kind of summarizes what they're doing. So that's just phase one. And a- again, you know, we're looking at doing this in phases and it's step by step. And and Paul and his team will be giving updates as uh as we progress and and getting feedback and pivoting if necessary based on what the trustees um uh desires are. So that that pretty much summarizes it, but if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to try and answer it.
Trustees, any questions? Uh trustee Susa? Juste Susa?
Thank you, Chair. Um, just to be clear, this is a strategy for our overall investing or uh developing in real estate. It's not just Hakone specific, right?
That's correct. It is all real estate, income-producing, non-income-producing, every real estate holdings that that OHA has.
Sure to be clear. Thank you.
Yes.
Juste Akina?
Thank you. Uh, will Peregrine be able to get us the work in time to submit it to the auditor?
Yes, I mean, the the their overall uh project timeline is six months. The the first part of it, I I I think it's forty-five to uh forty-five days to two months is when they will get that over to us. But there will be updates a- as we progress to the board in terms of what they're coming up with and and getting recommendations.
So also in response to the audit report, we did say that we would target June June twenty-fourth as the target response. So that's what the phase one would do. It's targeting June twenty-fourth. As we go on and if we choose to go on with the next phases, we're looking to get our governance and policies and procedures completed by August twenty twenty-four.
Yes, thank you.
Any other questions, trustees? Otherwise, thank you. Uh, trustee uh Trask?
Sam, you're the Peninsula Real Estate uh advisor, aren't you?
Yes, I, my company is Peninsula Real Estate Partners and I'm the advisor to the board of trustees specifically for real estate.
And you've been in that position for a few years with our office?
Yes, two years, Chair, or trustee.
When I came in and I saw this, I then tried to see if I could review the quarterly or bi-annual reports. I was working with Casey. And I I never received any product. What Casey had actually told me was that Peninsula was hired to work for admin and the chair. Then I had requested the compensation records which show that to this year, you got seventy-two thousand with twenty-four coming. So it comes to about a hundred grand. But when I asked Casey for the quarterly and other reports from Peninsula, he told me there were none. And then when I followed up with him, he had left the office. Did you file quarterly or bi-annual or other reports that we can look at on the real estate, wherever it is? Did you file these reports? Where are they?
Trustee Trask, uh I I am at the disposal of the chair at working with the administration to produce whatever is required or whatever is necessary. There was no requirement for quarterly reports. I do do updates. I participate in all the meetings and when asked, I produce reports, but um I'm not specifically required to produce a a report that quarterly or or wa- uh you know, any period that that you're mentioning.
You're kidding me for a hundred grand? Your, well, it says here, I'm looking at Stacy, she PO amount seventy-two thousand, you got a balance of twenty-four, but that's this year's contract. It doesn't include last
That is eighteen months.
I was looking for your work product. Because we're looking at that now, lot, you know, lot by lot when it comes to some of our properties, but I couldn't find anything. The, the uh topics that we're talking about now, which is Peregrine, have you worked with them in the past?
Yes, I have.
Yeah. And was it
Contract, not outside of OHA.
No, that's why I'm asking it. Because I didn't see an RFP posted? Uh, is this under your contract?
This will be under my contract, which is specifically allowed for subcontractor as approved by OHA. So it uh once, you know, there is an approval, I will execute the contract. But it is specifically allowed for subcontracting.
So Peregrine does not report to this board, but is a subcontractor under your umbrella contract, is that correct?
They will be once, once the proposal is executed upon the trustee's approval.
This has not been executed yet, is that what you're saying?
That is correct.
Uh, does Peninsula have other, others, contractors that you're bringing in?
Uh, Peninsula does not. Linda Schatz is a, is a subcontract under Peregrine. Um, so if she is gonna assist with this, it will be under Peregrine, under their subcontract.
But Peregrine, what you're telling me is that Peregrine is going to be under your contract. They will be a subcontractor under you.
Up upon trustee's approval, they will be. That's correct.
When I looked at that proposal, it has a big price tag attached to it, Sam. And it's a lot larger than twenty-four thousand dollars, which you're gonna be billing my office. So does that mean that I'm gonna then get another bill from Linda Schatz and the and the Peregrine group?
The Peregrine proposal would be approved by the trustees along with the budget allocated, which would increase the the money allocated to my company, Peninsula Real Estate Partners.
Got it.
Um, any other questions? If not, we'll move on. Thank you, Sam. Thank you, Tim. Uh, are there any community concerns, Lehua?
Yes, we have one person signed up. We have Luann.
Let's have Luann.
Luann, you can unmute yourself.
Hello, hi, everybody. Aloha from Molukai. On behalf of the Ho'ole Hua Homesteaders Association, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
On behalf of the Ho'ole Hua Homesteaders Association, we would like to mahalo the board of trustees for sponsoring our event, which is happening tomorrow at Lanikeha. And that's all I have to say. Mahalo, Nui, and have a great day.
Thank you, Luann. Okay, uh just a reminder, trustees, we have about an hour. And then we come back for a protocol training at one o'clock. We're kind of excited about that because, you know, we can learn the right way from our senior um protocol officer. Uh, we do have to remind you folks that next week is our Molukai Week. And we're looking forward to that, um, starting on the sixth, on the fifteenth, on Wednesday. Uh, we, at six thirty PM at Lanikeha Community Center. And then Thursday, the board meeting at this, on the sixteenth to kick off our Outer Island Community and Board Meetings. So I'll entertain the motion of adjournment. It's been moved and seconded. Uh, we'll call vote.
Justia Hunna?
Aye.
Justia Kaka?
Aye.
Justia Kina?
Aye.
Justia Lapa?
Aye.
Justie Galutaria?
Aye.
Justie Susa? Justie Trask?
Aye.
Justie Wahee?
Yes.
Chair Hulu Lindsay?
Aye.
We have nine yes votes. We are adjourned.
Thank you. Thank you, trustees. Thank you, staff.
Make sure I'm stopped. How do I stop?